I'd like to call the City Council of the city of Lafayette to order. If everyone would please rise for the pledge of allegiance to our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would the clerk then please conduct a roll call?
Heidi.
Here.
Clinker.
Here.
Nargie.
Here.
Reynolds, Brown.
Here.
Allersmeyer.
Here.
Williamson.
Here.
Downing.
Here.
Campbell.
Here.
Coram present.
We will recess for a short time for a public hearing on Resolution 2019-3. If you would read that resolution, please.
A resolution declaring the designation of certain real estate as an economic revitalization area and approving the application for property tax abatement, J.A.K., the second partner's L.L.P., Kirby Risk Corporation Real Estate.
Are there any comments by members of the public concerning this particular resolution? There being none, then we will...
Need to reconvene.
Reconvene if...
Kevin?
Motion to reconvene.
Second.
Mr. Heidi, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those same sign, thank you. You have received the meeting, the minutes of the February 4th meeting. Are there any corrections to those minutes? Then I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes as communicated.
So moved.
Ms. Nargie, Mr. Brown.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those same sign, thank you. Presentation and disposal of claims.
There are none.
Presentation of petitions and communications.
There are none.
Reports of city offices.
Renewed department annual report 2018, renewed department monthly January, fire department annual report 2018, fleet maintenance monthly January, police department monthly January, and waterworks department monthly January.
All of those reports are on file in the city clerk's office and they are there for your examination anytime during regular business hours. Ordinances for second reading.
Ordinance 2019-04, an ordinance to amend amendment 2018-20 fixing the salaries of the appointed officers and employees of the city of Lafayette, Indiana for the year 2019, excluding the sworn protective occupation and law enforcement members of the police and fire departments.
Mrs. Allersmeyer?
Mr. President, I move to hear and approve ordinance 2019-04, second.
Any comments by members of the common council? There being none, yes, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, this ordinance amends ordinance 2018-20 correcting the salaries for the identified positions of CAD, system administrator, chief communication officer, and the communications technician. The original wage scale contained Scribner's errors that didn't fully incorporate the 3% raise for those identified positions.
Any questions of this gentleman? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone in the audience wish to address this particular ordinance? There being no comments, would the clerk then can... Excuse me? Would the clerk conduct the roll call vote on ordinance for second and final reading?
Heidi.
Aye.
Clinker.
Aye.
Nargie.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Allersmeyer.
Aye.
Williamson.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Ordinance passes seven to zero.
Ordinance 2019-9.
We'll do, how about if we do eight first?
Beg your pardon?
We'll do 2019-8.
Oh, my gosh, this time's going fast.
Yeah, you're moving along.
Okay, let's make it 2019-8.
Okay, an ordinance to amend zoning ordinance at Tepic New County, Indiana, to rezone certain real estate from NB to GB, 1909 Veterans Memorial Parkway, Market South LLC petitioner.
Mr. Downing?
I move to hear and approve ordinance 2019-08.
You got the year right, good. Mr. Heidi?
Second.
Second. Any comments by members of the common council? There being none, anyone in the audience wish to address this particular ordinance? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Chris Schellman of Gutwin Law here on behalf of petitioner Market South. Also, principal of Market South, Andy Gutwin is here as well. Today, we have before you a request from Neighborhood Business to General Business located on Veterans Memorial Parkway in Lafayette. It comes not only with a staff recommendation of approval, but also unanimous recommendation of approval from the APC. The property is currently an undeveloped lot located next in between two retail centers on Veterans Memorial Parkway. The rezone is with two commitments to remove sexual-oriented businesses as well as car lots. We'd be happy to answer any questions and would respectfully request approval.
Any questions of this gentleman? Thank you. Anyone else in the audience that wishes to address this particular ordinance? There being none, would the clerk then can please conduct a roll call vote on ordinance 2019-8?
Heidi.
Aye.
Clinker.
Aye.
Nargie.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Allersmeyer.
Aye.
Williamson.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Ordinance passes seven to zero.
Ordinance 2019-9.
An amendment to ordinance number 2010-11, inclusion of a certain property in the local Ninth Street Hill Historic District in the city of Lafayette, 519 South Ninth Street.
Mr. Clinker?
I move to hear ordinance 2019-09 on first reading.
Mrs. Nargie?
Second.
Any questions or comments by members of the common council? Yes, sir.
Good evening, John Collier, Economic Development Department. You have before you an amendment to ordinance 2010-11 for inclusion of property in the local South Ninth Street Historic... Wait, local South Ninth Street Hill Historic District. The property owner, Paul Shuler, voluntarily petitioned the Lafayette Historic Preservation Commission at its February 25th meeting for the property's inclusion in the local district. The house is a Queen Anne-style structure built in approximately 1895 and is rated as contributing in the Tepic New County interim report of historic sites and structures. The Historic Preservation Commission enthusiastically supports the property's inclusion in the local district and recommends the council's approval for this inclusion as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions of this gentleman? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Members of the audience wish to address this particular ordinance? There being no comments, would the clerk then please conduct a roll call vote on ordinance 2019-9?
Heidi.
Aye.
Clinker.
Aye.
Nargie.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Allersmeyer.
Aye.
Williamson.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Ordinance passes seven to zero.
Resolution, Resolution 2019-4.
A resolution declaring the designation of certain real estate as an economic revitalization area and approving the application for property tax abatement, H38 Apartments, L.L.P. Real Estate.
Now, this public hearing is prior to, or...
After.
After, okay, good.
Yes, sir.
Hello, I'm Jeff Ryan.
Put it on the floor first.
Yeah, good, good deal. Where are we at?
Mr. President, I vote that we hear and approve Resolution 2019-04.
Second.
Thank you very much. Go.
Hi, I'm Jeff Ryan. We're in real large development, we need to maintain a few of you, but I'm going to pass all of them so I can do this quickly and not take up any of your, too much of your time.
You could've said valuable time.
I know that that is, that's a given at a council.
So, we are co-developing this, H38 East Apartments with Area 4. Elva James is here with me also, if you have any questions for her. On the second page, you can see on where it is, it's next to Franciscan Hospital, just north of the new YMCA and Ivy Tech, great location for what we're going to be doing. And what we're going to be doing is net zero affordable housing with affordable transportation and services to break generational poverty. So, we're not trying to take on too much with this development. So, brief on what that means, net zero, it means that we will be generating as much electricity on-site as we expect the apartments to use. Moderate income apartments, so it's going to be affordable to people who are making less than 60% of area median income. Affordable transportation, our goal is to have it where residents don't have to spend more than 15% of their income on transportation, so we're going to do that with car share, bike share, being near the bus stop, variety of other things of that nature. And breaking generational poverty, we are going to have services on-site, plus we are partnering with many organizations in the community to prepare people for better jobs. You can see on the third page, site plan, we're going to have the community building, we'll have management and maintenance, but also have those services. And then two buildings, you see the elevation of the building there, and it has the slope of the roof there because it's going to be covered with solar panels. It's going to be 32 apartments, four of them are one-bedroom, most of them are two and three because it's kind of hard to break generational poverty if you don't have multiple generations living there, so we've got the twos and the threes. We are investing almost $7.4 million in the construction of this, doing net zero is not an inexpensive thing to do. We'll be employing about 100 people for the next year during construction at various times, and then we will have three part-time people that will be permanent employees on-site. Because it's only 32 units, we can't have full-time people, so it's a part-time manager, maintenance, and then a part-time resident services coordinator who will be the person who works with our residents to make sure that they're getting the connections in the community that they need to advance their careers and get into better jobs. So, like I said, I wanted to respect your time and go through there quickly, but I will answer any questions that you want, I can be here as long as you want.
I have a question, what, the panels will generate enough electricity or power to do all of needs of this particular buildings?
That is how it's been designed, we will be connected to the grid, so during the daytime, we'll be putting into the grid, at night, we'll be pulling out, but on average through the year, the design is to where we will be neutral on that, we will be producing as much as we use.
Good. Any questions of this gentleman?
I guess I'm, I have a question about your staffing, you're going to have three part-time employer, employees? I mean, usually when something goes bad in an apartment, it happens at old dark 30.
Let me have you respond a little bit, too.
You are?
I'm Elva James, I'm sorry, I'm the president of Area 4 Development and director of Area 4's and County Community Action.
Thank you.
We will be responsible for the on-site resident coordinator or family development person, and this project will pay for part-time salary, but Area 4 is going to pay for part-time salary, so that will be full cost. And that person will work with families through prices, through financial planning, connecting them to education, skills development, whatever it is they need to get ahead. And these are all people who will have some form of employment when they move in there, so it's not your usual affordable housing where it's a place to live and that's it. They must already be showing a history of unemployment and responsibility and commit to work with us to get all the poverty, to go to Purdue, or ITech, whatever it is they need to do to improve their lives and the lives of their children. We'll also work with them with their children, staying in school, doing their homework, and I mean, that's the only way to break generational poverty is to address both generations, and that's what we're going to do, with my staff person who will answer to me at Area 4, even though she or he will be on-site a lot of the time. Did that help?
That really wasn't the answer to my question, I'm talking broken pipes and stopped-up toilets.
Yeah, and even if we have somebody who was full-time, that's still, you know, eight to five, but all of our maintenance and managers know that they are on-call 24/7.
That's what I needed to know.
And so, yes, that is, we pride ourselves on how we maintain our apartments, and I invite anybody to go check out any of them, don't make a, don't call, just show up and see what we look like, and I think you'll be happy with what we're, what we do currently and will be bringing to Lafayette.
All right, thank you, sir.
In building of this, will you be using local people?
A little bit, we bid out, we have one local contractor, we bid it out to at least 16 local contractors, only three submitted proposals to us. So, we tried to do more, but that's all that we got responses for. Which means that they must be doing well right now, I mean, that's not a bad thing for them.
Any other questions?
I would like, Elva, just to quickly talk about the relationship with Subaru and Wabash National, please.
I would love to. For the past year and a half, we've been meeting and working with other nonprofits as well as corporations in the community. We have met with Screw, and we've met with Kirby, with Wabash National, we have an agreement that they will hire up to five people from this, once they graduate from this project annually, given they meet their employment criteria. Some other verbal agreements, Ice Cream Specialties, Caterpillar, some of those are interested as well, and we would see this as a, it's kind of workforce housing, so that people are helping to fill positions that we have locally, not just industry, also nursing, R&amp;D, physical therapists, that sort of thing, too. Individuals will be able to stay here as long as they need to, and as long as they're working with us, and working their plan. And it's been open arms to this project because it's not just housing to move here with no employment or future plans, and so it's very positive type of self-sufficiency project. I thought that was enough detail.
It is. I want to finish with Mr. Clinker.
I was just going to ask, what are the service, you said there's some financial planning, who's providing these services, what organizations will be involved in that?
Homestead Counseling has agreed to go on-site and do financial counseling for us there. We've also talked with Region 4 Workforce Developments involved, as well as ITech, or plan on having some classes on-site for job readiness and training, that kind of thing, before getting into actual classes. I'm trying to think of who else.
Marv.
YMCA, sorry, thank you, it's a long day already. The YMCA, they will have some scholarships for childcare. The two things that keep people from keeping their jobs, transportation, childcare. And so, those are the two things we're hitting head-on. So, we have an agreement with YMCA, and we've agreed with ITech, because they have classes too, post-Biden, this is very close, so it's easy access. The car transportation part of it has been difficult, we checked out a lot of different options, and as you know, there's not really transportation, second shift, third shift, you two a problem. So, we're looking at having a contract with Enterprise to have a car or cars on-site. We would pay the rent per month for that, and people would then pay to use it, so that it'd be on the app, on the phone app, to get to and from work. That will be one of the options, along with Faith Community Services, they have a car repair shop that's opening, so I've met with them, and they've agreed to work with us on the car repair, perhaps car loans through them. So, there are lots of different options that are going into this.
So, once these families have a stable income, et cetera, will they stay there, will be, at some point, they'll be asked to move on?
They will stay there until they're ready to move.
Okay.
However, if you're, if you have a good job, the next step would be purchasing a home.
Right.
So, our next step will be to work with them, along with Homestead Financial Counseling on how to save to buy a home.
Great.
And how to look for homes, that sort of thing. And then, I've asked the Housing Authority for some individual development plans, which is a savings program, where they put money into it each month over two years' time, and it's matched by four times as much. And that can be a savings for a home, for a car, for a school, for whatever it needs to be that's related to employment and skills development. So, I think we may get some of those smarts for there also.
I know it's part of the Chatham Square, there's a yearly mandatory drug testing, will that, anything like that in this situation?
We are going to do the drug testing in the beginning, we have a screening to see if they're, you know, what their history is, a little bit of a look at that, because we screened out certain things. We haven't gotten that far yet, but probably, and what I know is that my staff person will meet with them regularly to go over their plan, and if there are any issues, it'll be addressed then. If they do not work their plan, they will have to move out, period. We've looked at Chatham Square screening tools, and we're borrowing some of what they do for ours.
Okay.
So, I mean, we want this to be successful, and it will be, I wouldn't say that.
What school corporation, would it be an LSC or TSC, do you know?
38, is it, it's not Dayton, is it?
I think it's the...
It'd be a TSC, Dayton, okay.
Anywhere it's southbound, you know, the schools seem to be all burdened, I don't know, we'll do about that. Now, these things will be working people and to the economy through their employment and their betterment, and I don't see how any, how that can be wrong for any, anyone, them, us, the community, the city, the corporations, or, you know, whoever.
Sounds like a very unique setup.
It is, it's been a lot of work, but I'll tell you, the city has worked with us just once, has helped corporations, it's been, after we explained it, and they see that we're not just saying we're going to do something and not do it, there's been a lot that's stepped up to help us with it, so it's a community effort.
I think you've got a lot of people in this room behind you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody in the audience wish to address this particular issue? I guess so, Ray.
Quickly, I do think it's important that I let the council know my position, as many of you know, there's another project going on in the community that I fought diligently against to stop from coming here to the community because of the way it was handled and presented, and the lack of actual services and case management, and this project here, I'm in 100% support of. They have worked with us from the very beginning to truly build relationships, to take people out of poverty, not just warehouse people, to take people out of poverty and to put processes in place that I think can be successful, and it's also relatively small, so it's manageable, so there can be a lot of that individual attention that I think is important, and the relationships they've built with Wabash National and Subaru, and the people to actually hire the people, I mean, this is the way, I do believe you help move people towards self-sufficiency, you lift people up, you give them opportunities, and you try to start breaking generational poverty, so I am in support of this. The reason this is coming to you now, after they've already started construction and stuff, is because I made it clear that I wanted to see all of this truly in place, and once they got it truly in place, and all these relationships built, and I felt comfortable, I told them we'd be, I would support the tax abatement, so that money can go back in towards providing services and getting the folks that training and stuff they need to become self-sufficient, buy that house someday, so this is, I hope this becomes the model that everybody uses, so I'm in support of this.
It would be a good model, in my mind. Any other comments by members of the audience?
Perry Barber, 3700 Redbud Avenue, this is a really no-brainer on this, I just have some questions. Is there going to be, the cost, there was never a mention of the cost, does that determine on each individually?
Yes, I'll let, Elva or Tim.
Me for the rents?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, we, the, no, it is not each individual, it is set by the, being less than the 60% AMI rent, so, let me find my cheap sheet, one second. So, we're looking at rents depending on the size of the unit, between about $740 and $1,000 a month a day.
Because it's so, so, you guys are covered.
Package, part of the package, and this is a, and unique, let me get into the mic for people can hear at home, this is a unique thing for our area, is this, any of ours, anyone else in the state is doing this like this?
So, we are part of the Moving Forward 2.0 from the Indiana Housing and Community Development Authority, so we're the second year of doing something similar to this. The first year did not have the wraparound services for written generational poverty, it only had the net zero and the affordable transportation, so, no, it is, we will be the first, the other one that got it working same time we did.
What's that, I think his name is sitting there, he's leaving.
That's Marion County, so that's urban, we're...
Stay right here.
And is there a place like for children to play out and whatnot, or is it just like in a regular apartment?
Uh, we will have a playground, so, I mean, we've got open area, so they can, you know, throw them all around, or playground, so, we'll have to stop there.
Four and a half acres.
And the, okay, because that's one thing that...
The garden's on Site 2, and the kids that are inside, techs that are inside, you know, plenty of other...
And we'll talk about transportation, is there going to be, is City Bus going to be partnership with this project?
Not at this time, there is a bus stop out on Creasy, so it's not very far.
Okay, so, at this time, there's no...
It's not a partnership with the last company, no, we do not have bicycles on-site though, too.
Yeah, okay, I think it's a great project, I just had those questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions by members of the audience? There being none, we will have a public hearing on this on the first day of April, is that...
We need to vote on it first.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
The first day of April, so you might put that on your calendars, that would be for 6:31. Now, we'll have a vote on this particular resolution. Would the clerk then conduct a roll call, please?
Heidi.
Aye.
Clinker.
Aye.
Nargie.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Allersmeyer.
Aye.
Williamson.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Resolution 2019-5.
A resolution confirming the designation of certain real estate as an economic revitalization area and approval of an application for property tax abatement, J.A.K., the second L.L.P. Real Estate entity for Kirby Risk Corporation Real Estate.
Any comments by members of the common council? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Dennis Carson.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir, thank you.
I move we hear and approve Resolution 2019-05.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, very good.
All right.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Dennis Carson, Economic Development Director, as you know, you heard a presentation at last month's meeting from Kirby Risk on this project, so this is the second reading, so if you have any questions, the mayor and I would be happy to answer them, and also Doug Mansfield from Kirby Risk is here as well.
Guaranteed to have Doug Mansfield speak?
Sure.
I'm happy to, Mr. President. Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the council, as you know, our company has been around a long time, and we're a tier-one supplier on the manufacturing to many global OEMs, and sometimes that business goes up and sometimes it goes down, and fortunately, right now, we're in a very positive position, and our McCarty Lane project, which we have 224,000 square feet, we're out of room, and so, the two things to grow are people and space, and I'm working always on the people, and the space, I need more, so, if possible, we would love for the council to approve tax abatement, we're going to add 100,000 square foot plus, we'll connect the second building to the third building, that'll allow us to do light assembly, manufacturing, wiring harnesses, et cetera, in the expansion part of our business. So, that's our story, and we appreciate your thoughtfulness and approval of the project.
Any questions of Mr. Mansfield? Thank you. Mayor, do you still want to speak?
Go.
Okay, want to speak? There being no comments, would the clerk then conduct a roll call vote on Resolution 2019-5?
Heidi.
Aye.
Clinker.
Aye.
Nargie.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Allersmeyer.
Aye.
Williamson.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Resolution 2019-6.
A resolution adopting reporting metrics for the Lafayette Entrepreneur and Enterprise District X District.
What is the pleasure of the council, I think, Mr. Downing?
I move to hear and approve Resolution 2019-06.
Thank you, Mr. Heidi.
Second.
Yes, sir.
Again, Dennis Carson, Economic Development Director, this resolution is in regards to a new program that was passed by the General Assembly in 2017, and this is a successor to the Enterprise-owned program. This program, the Enterprise and Entrepreneur District focuses more on small business development, tech, and innovation, and as part of the requirements for this program, metrics has to be established to track the program and its outcomes and such, and so, it's your duty
Who decides on the metrics that are going to be used?
Well, we decided on those, you know, ourselves based on the programming and things that we're going to be doing through the program and such. And also, some of that was in state legislation as well, too.
Thank you. Any other questions that you folks might have of Mr. Carson? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any members of the audience wish to address this particular resolution? There being none, would the clerk conduct a roll call vote on Resolution 2019-6?
Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Alers Meyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Resolution passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Reports of standing committees. Special committees. The mayor.
No, sir.
Reports of councilmen. Public. Oh, yes, good. Somebody is here to speak to us. Mrs. Deverall.
Hi, Margie Deverall, Economic Development Department. Back in January, I provided an annual report to the mayor and to Cindy Murray, giving an outline of what the new Bicycle and Pedestrian Citizen Advisory Committee accomplished in 2018. So, he asked that I would come today and just give a quick review of that report. The history of the committee was established in June of 2017, an ordinance that you all passed and was adopted, or amended, in April of 2018. The Citizen Advisory Committee was a recommendation in the Lafayette Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan from June of 2015, as well as the BikeWalk Greater Lafayette Safety Plan adopted in November of 2017. So, per the ordinance, the mayor appointed nine community members and two city staff members, one from the Engineering Department and one from the Economic Development Department that would serve as the bike ped coordinator for the city. So, the members, and I saw one walk in. The members of the committee, quickly, Christopher Dick. He's a community volunteer with the Mozy. He's a cyclist and bike club member. Mark Wilson, bike and pedestrian advocate and a teacher at Ivy Tech in Purdue. Nora Chadlick, a marathon runner and cyclist. Tara Gorillos, a cyclist and professor at Purdue. David Henry, cyclist, former runner and teacher at McCutcheon High School. Ann Fields Monicle, bike and pedestrian advocate and works for Typical Arts Federation. Derek Johnson, cyclist and advocate for bike and pedestrian safety. Christopher Santos, cyclist. He also is the team director for a new bike racing team, which he started. He works at Hodgson's Bay and has the sadly unique addition to his background. He was a victim of a bike vehicle crash, so. And then, lastly, Taylor Amato, and he's from the mayor's youth council. He's a runner and a cyclist. And then myself and Jeremy Grunard from the engineer's office. So, I saw David Henry walk in. I was, I invited all of the committee members to come because I was going to make them stand up and be recognized. So, David.
Is he a runner?
Former runner, cyclist. His son was a bike racer, or no, your nephew, he caught the bug. So, he goes down to the velodrome in Indianapolis and races. So, what I think has been a real treat working with this committee and something that I find unique is that in the ordinance, it said that they would meet at least four times a year, but that it was up to them to decide how often they would meet. So, our first meeting was in May. We had two orientation meetings. So, they each learned a little bit about background, ordinances, resolutions, plans that affect cyclists and pedestrians. The next seven meetings, because they decided, they decided at the orientation that they wanted to meet every month because they felt they had a lot to learn, they had a lot to contribute, and they wanted to do that monthly. So, we had, after May, we had seven meetings. We had presentations from the Engineers Department, REC. Jeremy brought maps a couple times for them to look and give input, like where are the hotspots in town, where maybe things need to be addressed right away. We had Greg McDaniel come from the Police Department. Claudine came from the Parks Recreation and gave a presentation as well. Mike Roush from the Street and Sanitation Department. So, they understand what the departments do and how the work that goes on. And those departments might affect cyclists and walkers and runners. So, from those meetings, here's what they accomplished. In June, they were shown the Salem Pavement Marking Plan, the proposed plan. And as a result of the meeting, the plan changed. So, they gave Jeremy their feedback, where the bike lane should be, where parking should and shouldn't be, and made an impact on that before it was installed. In August, Jeremy brought a map, and that's where they looked at hotspots, where things they felt needed to be addressed. And as a result of that, there's a, Jeremy, don't correct me if I'm wrong. I think there's end-up money to help add some lighting on a pedestrian path and, yeah, Concord. And then, there was a consideration for a hawk signal as well. Then, in September, after looking at the Trail Master Plan, they also prioritized what trails should be, should be built. They encouraged me to make an application to the League of American Bicyclists for Bicycle Friendly Community Designation. And that was turned in on the 5th of February. They also suggested that we have a community-wide bicycle and pedestrian community meeting. You know, the leaderships of different clubs and organizations to help network and coordinate activities. And that happened a week ago Saturday. And we had over 30 people come. We had cyclists, runners. We had representation from the Lafayette Police Department, Parks Department, Engineer's Office. And that, that effort is actually Lafayette, West Lafayette, and the county. So, we had staff from all three jurisdictions. We had business owners there. We had people there from the health and wellness community. So, we feel like that, we made some headway. And it was the consensus of the people there that they want to continue to meet. They want to, they want to do the networking. So, that's kind of it in a nutshell. They've been busy and they're an absolute delight to work with. If you have any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The only thing I would say is to try to keep us appraised of what's going on so that we, city council and the administration doesn't get blindsided by any of the things or stipulations or plans that you have for bike lanes and things of that sort. Any public comment? There being none, Mr. Heidi?
I move to adjourn. Mr. Campbell?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Thank you very much.